Jared.
Mr. Earhart. Tammy Blake.
Here.
Cindy Broden.
Here.
Julia Tomarki-Kukro.
Present.
Mr. Harley.
Here.
Mr. Kerr.
Present.
Dr. Rig.
Here.
Dr. Shaffer.
Here.
Mr. Froh.
Here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming this evening. I do not have a board president message. Did anybody sign up for public comment? The slate is blank. Okay, is there anybody here from IAEA or Ask Me? No one? I do believe we have an SGA representative. Good evening. Go ahead and give your report if you have anything.
No report.
You haven't started work on the prom. Okay, well, we'll wait till the, we'll wait till the next time. Thank you for coming. Um, Stuka, anybody from Stuka?
They will start coming here in future months. I have to meet with the student. You have one of the presenters uh, from the various academic community meetings, one of the young men wants to come and be part of the board. I have to go meet with him and his, uh, his parents, but they're gonna start coming too. So you have a Stuka representative at the table if the board's okay with that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, Mike Superintendent's report.
I'll make my comments rather quick. Um, School Director Recognition Month is this January, and I just want to say thank you to all you, um, as you know, you don't get paid at all. And as you know, I keep you here long hours every night, uh, every Monday night, and you do an incredible job and not enough credit is given to you, even when you disagree, you dissent with dignity, and I think there's a lot of us can learn from that, how you handle, how you conduct yourself. And on behalf of this whole entire community, I can't sincerely thank you enough for what you do. Uh, and you're doing a lot of heavy lifting. This board has gone through COVID. This board has gone through a building renovation. This board has gone through a building fire. This board has done amazing work, and despite your differences at current time, you remain to stick together, put, do what you think is best for kids, and that's commendable. And I really want to just applaud you for that, what you do and who you are. It's an honor, uh, to work for you. It's a blessing to be here. I just want to celebrate you. I have a newsletter I'm sending out to families to recognize you for all the work you've done. And I'll go quick into accolades. You've built up your general fund by four million dollars. You made really tough financial decisions, but you also put kids and their needs at the forefront. And my editorial will explain that in the paper as well to our families and simply on behalf of all the administration and attorney repack, we just want to say thank you because I don't know if you hear that enough, and um, I just, we want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Your comments are appreciated and most welcome. Ron Solicitor's report.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, actually, I was, most of my districts that I'm gonna be attending here this week, I was gonna talk about the name, image, and likeness that the PIAA approved. Um, but for you guys, you're kind of the catalyst, you're the start. I work with the administration.
Take, take that out, Mr. President.
When is Superintendent's recognition?
Every day.
Every, I was.
Every day. Okay, next.
But, uh, for the district, um, again, they passed it at the PIAA, uh, the administration and myself worked to get a policy online. You already have a policy. We already have a student who's applicable for it, um, that the administration has met with about that name, image, and likeness. Again, that's the ability for a student athlete to be able to be compensated in some measure, um, by their own, you know, personal accolades. You know, the, the difficulty with this name, image, and likeness policy and PIAA's policy is you can't use the school name, school colors. Um, you can't really, you can't promote the school, you promote yourself. Um, so I, I see that there's gonna be some difficulty in how do you promote yourself as being the star quarterback if you can't promote the school that you play for? Um, so I think it's gonna be interesting on how this develops. You know, there's some other, uh, items as well that we've placed into that policy. You can't promote drugs, alcohol, um, guns, weapons, things of that nature. So that has been in the, in the policy for review, but I did want to bring that up because that's something that's gonna get a lot of traction in the next couple of months.
So, so just a quick question on that, Ron. So if we had a star quarterback, he could not appear in his football jersey then?
He can appear in a red football jersey, not one that says Indiana.
Correct. He cannot have Indiana, and we can't have an alumni, like the Indiana Alumni Association donate money to the individual. So that's another, uh, prohibition, uh, through the PIAA policy. So again, like I said, I think the difficulty and, and kind of the, I'll use the nonlegal term, the fun of seeing this is how do you promote the individual without promoting the school? Uh, but there are individuals who have already been able to take advantage of it, and you have one right here in Indiana, uh, area school district who's been able to do so, you know, simply based on the individual himself. So it can happen. Uh, it's just interesting how this is gonna develop, you know? Again, you have the prohibition against the rifle, uh, or weapons, you know, you have a rifle team. How, how does that go hand in hand? You know, that student now doesn't have the ability. So I, I just, I see this evolving over time, uh, but you do have a policy on the books as of now. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, on to number two.
Yes, um, we are, I think at each of your place setting, you may have a certificate from PSBA that we just wanted to, um, say thank you for your work and your due diligence. And these printed these out today, so again, we just want to spend time, uh, recognizing you for the work you've done, and each of you have been presented, presented with a certificate.
Okay. All right. Approval of minutes and the agenda. Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on the agenda or the minutes? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Board reports. I do not have anything for ICTC. Aaron, uh, Tammy, do you have something for Aaron?
Um, there were a few resignations, some hires, and they adopted a new dog training, uh, procedure, and that was a very short meeting. That's all.
Okay, and you're up again for outreach.
We didn't really do anything for outreach last month, um, unless I'm wrong. Mike, am I wrong?
Absolutely correct. We're good. We'll, we'll have a meeting next week.
Okay, good. All right, Tom, looks like you're up with academic and extracurricular.
We had no meeting. We have, um, cannabis tenure, contract with IUP commencement, deal experience agreement, super story mural project, American civic literacy initiative, a grant, out of one, still disciplinary agreement, comprehensive guidance plan, and a field trip request. I assume you need to take excuses off the IUP.
It's just a field experience. It doesn't bring any money, so, um, as long as.
What about the contract by you?
The commencement? Isn't that what K C A sees it?
Yeah, you don't pay anything. Oh, you do pay to I T D. Okay, then I will have to.
Okay, well, let's, let's take five two through five, uh, eleven with, uh, noting, noting. Any objection?
Okay, questions, comments, or discussion on five two through five eleven?
Yes, Julia.
On the American civic literacy initiative. I was reading that over, and I, I think it's great. I just am hoping that if a student wants to have an internship working in some politically affiliated or governmental entity, let's say they want to go up and volunteer, I don't know what it would be, they could apply maybe to the registered reporters office and learn a little bit about paralegal work and, and, and how that whole, all the indices, and that's an example. Or perhaps they could go to one of the elected officials and say, you know, can we come into your office and do some firsthand work on a project? I would hope that we have somebody that, you know, we could offer that and coordinate it, because I don't know of any better way to learn it than you actually get.
Yes, ma'am, we do. We, we do have some students sometimes who take advantage of that. We know we have students who are interested. Also, when we went down to, um, the Capitol, Congressman Thompson's office agreed and is willing to work with us on it as well for kids who may want to do internships even with him in his office. We just haven't developed it yet, but there is an interest.
Even in the summer.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. You're absolutely right.
But I, I think we may have some students that are already doing that.
Would you?
Um, on an individual basis, not necessarily coordinating through the school or as a part of, you know, their civics program. So I think your point's well taken, Julia, that we should kind of try to figure that out, how to, um, include some of those, those students, or at least offer them the opportunity to become involved. Okay, now Tom made the motion. I made an air. We did not get a second on five two. Yes, Cindy did. Okay. So questions, comments, or further discussion on any of the motions from five two through five eleven?
The only thing I like that, that's okay, Mr. President, we have two special guests here with us today. Um, Lee Manning, uh, yeah, Lee Manning and Lindy Stossel. I was gonna call you Lindy. Yeah, I apologize there for a minute. You've got a ton of time. Um, I don't work with them as closely as Kelly does, but I will say this, every time in their building, I'm reminded by how lucky we are to have them in our buildings. Lindy goes above her way, um, to work with kids every single day. During COVID, the worst position other than mine was as school nurse. Um, and they've done Herculean efforts to make sure kids were in school, to make sure they did everything to keep kids safe. Lindy's a huge asset to our district. Lee, on the other hand, is equally as great. Lee, on the other hand, is, uh, is absolutely incredible. Um, a little quick story about him. And Kelly, I may butcher this and I apologize, but I, I want to try to protect the names of the, the individual. I was at an event at Ben Franklin, and this one student was just following Lee around everywhere, and only to find out that two years prior, or a year prior, that the per, the individual was nonverbal. And this person was, this young student was just so happy and so loved Lee that she's talked, he, this, they were talking, um, smiling, expressing themselves, controlling emotions where just a year ago they couldn't be in a regular setting. And that's not done by accident. Uh, that's done from people like them, um, who go above and beyond, and it was just remarkable to see that. And I think I was really freaking him out that day because I kept hanging it over like, I'm so proud of you. This is so awesome. And he's kind of like, get away from me. I get it, right? It's my job. But that's the type of people you have, and I just wanna, just wanna recognize that. Kelly, I'll turn the floor over to you if there's anything else you want to say, but I personally want to say thank you. The board is totally appreciative and, uh, just so thankful to have you as part of the district. Okay?
Sure, I mean, I, I was kind of thinking along the same lines, but I think of Lee, um, one word that comes to mind is connections. He does an outstanding job making connections with children and more importantly with their families. And then he goes above and beyond to work with his colleagues because he's a special education teacher. He needs to really work with everybody in, in the school. And so it's not uncommon for Lee to be staying after, well, while late into the evening, making sure that he's touched base with families, making sure that he's just reassuring somebody, you know, they had a rough day, that it's gonna be a better day tomorrow. And, um, he, he's just constantly calm and cool and collected in some of the most, um, trying situations. And so I'm, I'm just very grateful to have him on our team. When I think of Lindy, I think of the word he's passionate, and, uh, Lindy is just so kind to our children. It doesn't matter if they're coming in with, uh, you know, a broken nail or bleeding profusely. She's always just like taking, everything is dry, everything's fine, and she never gets fussed up. Um, Lindy and I, at one point, we were, um, having Sunday night, um, communications. I mean, this went on for like months. And she was never annoyed, you know, I'd have to call and say, hey, Lindy, we have somebody, and I need you to call the family. She was never annoyed. She was never irritated. Okay, Kel, no problem. And you have no idea how many extra hours she has put in for our district. And, um, for that, I will be always grateful, um, that you have two wonderful individuals that deserve tenure. We are so blessed and we are so lucky to have them as part of our school community. And, um, I also want to wish you all a happy School Director Recognition Month. And thank you for all you do as well. But, um, these are two wonderful individuals, so we are very, very.
And one fact, a fun fact for you, Mr. President and Board, Ron and Lee were, um, foes on the wrestling match.
Would you like to give us a, would you like to demonstrate?
I, look, we'll talk afterwards. Let's keep it, um, this is governed positively right now. Afterwards, we'll tell, tell.
What's that?
Do you know the Jock Withers? That's what I thought.
I'll turn it back to you, Mr. President.
Five five, the, the Euro project is also at Ben Franklin, and, um, the, the committee recommended this to, to fund out the project. We encouraged them to paint more. The fellow who's, who's running this project is, because of his experience at Indiana, at Horace Mann with Mural, he is now doing full-time, um, um, community and student-educated type projects like this. Yeah, yeah, yeah. He, he finds that this is much more rewarding than painting another mural on some wall in Philadelphia. So he's, so.
Very good.
And encouraging to paint more, more of that. It's been quite a miracle.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or discussion on five two through five eleven? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? And note.
Abstaining five point three.
Five point three only abstention for suit. Okay, Cindy, it looks like it's your turn.
Congratulations. Committee meeting report. We, the Policy and Personnel Committee meeting, committee met this evening. We talked about, uh, some staffing issues. Some of those are going to be brought in tonight. An, an agreement with a university to have a student-teacher agreement, partnership. That is on the way. There's a new federal, um, funds are being available and an upcoming grant that we will be, uh, the committee feels that we should go ahead and apply for. It's not available yet. Um, there's a, an agreement between the IUP facilities and the district for softball and baseball fields that we'll be dealing with. Then we also have the first read on the multiple policies, which, um, you can find those listed on the agenda with links to look at. Um, PIAA policy dealing with the name, image, and likeness, uh, ruling that has come down. Principles for Governance and Leadership, which we will be adopting tonight. Uh, policy on suspensions and expulsion, changing some of the wording in that, changing some wording in the attendance policy, transportation policy, dressing and grooming policy, and some work on the graduation policy. Um, enrollment of students, the process for enrolling students, that policy is going to be tweaked. Students experiencing homelessness, foster care, and other educational instability policy will also be, um, looked at. And tonight was the first read, so anybody can look at it, and the second read will be next month. We also talked about the Indiana Area School District and Indiana Borough Police Collaboration, which we will be talking about this evening in this meeting. Um, and some computer-mediated instructors that we need to, um, that we need to, uh, make some changes so that we can, um, continue with those. And that's it. That's what we do at the meeting. And now for the agenda tonight. We've got, uh, the board policies that I just talked about. We're, we, uh, we're approving the first read of those. Resignation of professional personnel. We've got an elementary, we've got several teachers, um, resigning. Uh, Mark Morrow from Eisenhower Elementary, that will be the thirtieth teacher day of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Howard Murray, an East Pike Elementary art teacher. Faith Newman, a junior high science teacher. Those two will be, um, resigning effective the last day of this school year. We will have a resignation of a confidential technician. Manon Gill was a computer technician, and that will be a resignation. Uh, support staff resignation, Mary Schmutscher, a para educator, is going to be resigning, and, um, we're wanting to post an interview for these positions. We've got several leaves of absence that we are, um, approving. Six point seven is Principles for Governance and Leadership. I think Walter usually wants that one pulled out, so I'll pull that one out. Also in consent, I'd like to take six point eight, computer-mediated instructor, and that will be, um, Rachel Horrell will be, uh, approved as a computer-mediated instructor. There are four long-term substitute positions that we will be approving in six point nine. That would be Magdalena Cassidy as a secondary English ESOL teacher substitute, long-term subs. Opal Thompson as a long-term secondary music substitute. Dylan Reinhardt as a long-term secondary Spanish substitute. And John Phillips as a long-term secondary special education substitute. We also have an extra duty, extra pay assignment for the girls volleyball assistant coach at the junior high, and that will be Rachel Horrell. And then the last item, six point eleven on the agenda, I'd also like to pull that out. That's a school safety service partnership with the borough. So, um, six point two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, and ten, I would like to take as consent.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on six two through six six?
The only thing I'll add is we just want to say thank you to all those staff members who are, are retiring. We have over seventy-two years of service leaving us, um, one day retire, and we just want to say thank you for all the work they've done here, um, over their career. Faith Newman has over twenty-seven years in the district, Mark Morrow over twenty, and Howard Murray, um, over thirty. So we just want to say, I know, Mr. President always asks me that, so I wrote it down this time. Uh, I, I want to say thank you.
Especially if we did consent.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor of those motions, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, Cindy, next.
Motion six point seven, Principles for Governance and Leadership, that the board adopts the Principles for Governance, Governance and Leadership established by the Pennsylvania School Board Association.
Do I have a second? Okay, it's been moved in second. Um, I would just like to point out that, um, you know, we, we take this relatively seriously, yeah, to the point where, um, we, on that closet door, have a poster hanging, uh, that, that delineates, uh, those principles of governance. And, um, yes, it is an annual, uh, request, uh, that I and other past presidents have made of the board to reapprove these each year. Questions, comments, or discussion on govern, rules and governance? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Six point seven passes.
Motion six point eleven, School Safety Service Partnership, that the board approves the School Safety Service Partnership Agreement between the Indiana Area School District and the Indiana, and the Indiana area borough, the Indiana Borough Police Department in compliance with Act one twenty-two, which allows cooperative police service agreements pursuant to, I, I'm not gonna read all the names of the laws. Um, this relates to statewide municipal police jurisdiction and the intergovernmental cooperation agreements that these laws allow us to do this. To authorize the exercise of concurrent jurisdiction with local law enforcement within the school entity or school event for a four-year term.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on this? Mike, is there anything? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Sure. Uh, first of all, I'm gonna start by thanking the state police for all their work. I speak for the whole entire board. They've done a phenomenal job serving us over the last several years, but as you know, with the result of increasing school shootings, there's been some concern from the board to take action to how we continue to make sure our schools are a safe place for our kids and our students and our staff. And this agreement does that. This is something that's been working on for several years. Uh, it's something that's been in discussion. It's a systems approach to school safety that is built upon four different pillars. The four pillars are presence and relationships, awareness and capacity, professional learning and collaboration, and threat assessment and response. And what we're trying to do is look at a systematic, um, response to school safety and how we can work together to make sure our schools are safe and secure. This partnership is due possible to the work of Senator Don White. As a result of unfortunate events that happened in Franklin Regional some time ago, he made, he made, wrote, introduced a policy that was approved, I believe, Bill eleven ninety-four of two thousand thirteen, which is, allows us to authorize this request that we're making here this evening. Uh, well, I think what's important is it's a four-year agreement and PCCD funds. As you know, we received additional funding this year from the, uh, PCCD in the area of mental health as well as preventative measure and, uh, physical school safety. We asked to make sure this is an expendable, uh, allowable expenditure. They approved that, and what's gonna happen is you're gonna see greater partnership between us and the borough police when it comes to school safety, it comes to patrolling our schools, being involved in our schools, but not only in a punitive way, uh, that most people see that, but more in a proactive way where they're gonna bring in their, uh, therapy dogs to come to their school to work with their kids who may be suffering from, uh, trauma, mental health. And they're gonna work with us on our, our procedures and planning to make sure that when something, if something were to occur, our response is timely and appropriate. That's what we see across the nation. There's been fifty-five, I believe, over fifty school shootings, and we have to work, continue to work together, revamp our school safety protocols and procedures. And this allows us to do that with the, the support of the Indiana Borough Police. So what will happen in, in the white township schools is they'll receive the same substance, same types of supports that our, um, borough schools now receive. And additional, there'll be those other aforementioned items in which they'll be working with us on a systematic approach to school safety soon.
Okay, Mike, um, but to clarify, um, we're taking the initial step in, in, in approving this document tonight, but there's still one more step in the approval process.
Yeah, great question. Thanks for clarification. What happens, sir, is we make the initial request, once we make the request, depending on what you do tonight, that then goes to Indiana Borough, um, Indiana Borough Council, and they have to approve it as well. So this is the first step.
Thank you.
Ron, is there anything you wanna, did I just speak it all, sir?
No, I, I, it's correct. I mean, I think, just to be clear, when the state police is not relinquishing their jurisdiction over the school district, it's really just a nice, um, cooperative, you know, effort between the state police, your local borough, and you still have your safety and security coordinator, your outside consultant. Everyone has worked together to develop this, and both legal counsel from both sides, the borough and myself, have worked together to develop it. So, you know, it really is a nice dovetail of all of the services for the district. So I, I do, I applaud the administration and the board. Um, you know, it's one of, a, a rare agreement, uh, in our area. You know, we've seen them, um, out east, but here, we haven't really seen much of this. So I think it's a nice start to, to see what this can, you know, can build in the, in the community.
Okay, oh, yes, Tom.
Um, I'm, I'm, what, I'm tremendously in favor of this, um, in, in reducing friction in an event. Um, so that our, our staff has the same person, doesn't matter what building is in trouble. They, they have the same response and the same, the same sequence, and the same people they're listening to, and I think that's going to, to, to reduce the friction on an event. But more importantly, with the services that they're doing inside the borough now, in the, in the schools in the borough, with, um, we'll be able to extend those to the, to the, to the, to most of our schools.
Okay, thanks, Tom. All those in favor of six eleven say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Carrie, building grounds.
There's no committee meeting report. We do have a, uh, committee meeting coming up on January sixteen. Where you'll see a motion below regarding the design, schematic design approval for the Eisenhower Elementary, so that's the update there. I'll move on to, are we okay with taking consent, or do we want to pull any of these out?
I'm okay with the consent, Carrie, if you are.
I'd like to pull seven four out.
Okay.
And what's, let me see here, seven?
Seven three's the only other one, then.
Okay, so we'll do them separate here. I, I just looked at my agenda. Seven point three is the insurance claim contracted based on the recommendation of the administration and the district's attorney for the Eisenhower Insurance Claim Proceedings. The agreement with Robson Forensic at a cost not to exceed twenty thousand be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Seven four, the approval of schematic design for Eisenhower. That based on the recommendation of the committee of the hall, the board approves schematic design for Eisenhower in accordance with section three point two point seven of the contract with Bucard Horn.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on this motion?
Um, I would just like to say to Mr. Ray Pack, it's my understanding, though, that there would be nothing to prevent us from looking at the reviewing the soft costs.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think this is simply just looking at that design, but there's just gonna still be tweaks and, and some reevaluation of not only the soft costs, but some other pieces that we need to clean up before we would move to the design development.
Do you feel it's necessary to put a contingency clause in?
I, I don't, I don't know that it does, um, because again, we're only, we're only approving that, uh, schematic design side. I think we still have some of those tweaks. You have another phase after this for the design development, and the board, I would, we would be making requests to the board to take that same action at that point in time. So again, I still think you have time to be able to make tweaks.
Strictly schematic design?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or discussion on seven point four?
Yes, Walter.
Yes, Cindy.
Um, this new schematic design is a result of having to cut costs, and I was, I voted against it at the committee of the hall, and I will be voting against it here. I don't. I don't think this design is academically as sound as the original. It costs more. And I don't think that we are spending taxpayer money efficiently and in a proper way that will forward and promote academics. So that's why I'll be voting no.
I, you know, I understand her comments, but I don't really share that. I think that this is a sensible budget that we've come up with, and I think that this will be more than adequate for our students, and it should be a beautiful facility.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I wanted to mention, over the Christmas break, I've had several of our taxpayers talk to me also about putting this kind of money into this site. I'd brought that up at the beginning of this process, and I've learned a lot throughout the process. And I'm really struggling with putting tens of millions of dollars into this small site. And if you do any research into what an acreage should be or the acreage should be for a school, a 21st century school, it's 10 plus acres. So, and it's funny that these people now have come up to me and really expressed the concern.
Okay, Carrie, thank you. Anybody else?
I've had just the opposite. I think a lot of people are pleased that we're going to be putting money into the town facility. I think it's a beautiful school. I think it always was in many ways, and I think it'll be a great project for us.
Thank you, Julia. Ron, you've raised your hand. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I, I mean, I really believe we've discussed this so much. And I truly believe that spending 33.8 million was way out of budgets. I believe what we did, and the administration has gone back through, they said what we developed here fits the program that they've designed, and I can't see why we can't move forward with it. I think it will be a nice school. I think it's going to be an in-town school, which everybody wanted. So I think it meets all the demands that we're looking for, and administration has agreed that it does. So I think that's where we need to go with it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, the only thing, I'm sorry. Tammy, go ahead, Tammy.
I have to say that I like the previous design better, but I am just wanting to get it voted on and get it started. So I'm going to go with a majority here because I think the community would rather us break ground than continue debating at all. So that's me.
Okay, Tammy, thank you. The only thing that I would add is, I agree with Terry to the extent that the site size is certainly not ideal, but it is what we have. And so I think it's critical that we take what we have and work with it. Yes, if we were starting from scratch, it would be better to build the building on a 10 or 15 acre, acre plot. But unfortunately, that's not the site we have to work with at this point in time. Anybody else? Comments, questions, or discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call on this one.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Tammy Byne?
Yes.
Cindy Bro?
No.
Julia Tamarkey-Cuprow?
Yes.
Mr. Harley?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
No.
Dr. Rig?
Yes.
Dr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Schruth?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to two.
Seven to two. Okay. Thank you all. Julia, Audit and Finance.
We did not have a meeting tonight. We are going to be having our auditor come. What date would that be? We've got to push that up.
It will be in February.
So anytime that Kim can make it, I think maybe if we, even if we have to have a call, a special meeting to hear her report, I think that would be fine. I'd like to take these one, one by one because there are three motions that are, that I think are very important, that the current bill's be approved as submitted. That's number eight point two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Julia, question, comment, or?
I didn't see anything terribly unusual, Jared, unless you did. And these bills, they seem rather standard.
They're all our routine bills.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
It's with the great pleasure that I'm here. The board accepts the donation of $400 and sensory games and teaching tools from Mr. and Mrs. Steve Montgomery to the East Pike Life Skills Program.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on that?
This is a very nice gift, and I was hoping maybe Jared or Justin might be able to comment briefly on what this sensory games and teaching tools, if $400, how that will work.
I don't know what all was donated as far as the sensory games and teaching tools, but I, but I can say that Mrs. PageX room here at East Pike will be incredibly grateful for, for the donation.
I believe Mrs. Merkle was intimately involved with that, too. She had worked with this, with this family and made some real progress with her children. I know that she was instrumental in getting these, these games donated towards special programs.
That's very nice. Thank you.
Okay, all those, any other questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, this is our, very important on our calendar of events for Finance Committee. It's section eight point four, Act One. Action required that the board approves the resolution that they will not increase any school tax, school district tax for the 2023, 24 school year at a rate that exceeds the index of 5.2% as calculated by the Pennsylvania Department of Education be approved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on eight point four?
I'd like Jared to chime in here. This is very important, what we're saying. We wouldn't raise taxes above the 5.2.
Absolutely. You're not, and this motion does not set a tax rate. It does not, what it does is limit in the future, if you do choose to raise taxes as part of the 23, 24 budget, it just limits that at the 5.2%. It really is the first step in the, what I consider, budget season for the 22, 23, or 23, 24 school year. Again, by no means sets any tax rate, says that you're even going to raise taxes. It just sets that if you do choose to do that as part of the budget at the limit that PDE has set at 5.2% for Indiana area school district.
Yeah, this was a pretty easy discussion that we had. We wouldn't, we can't think of any reason that would cause us to have to do such a thing. And this was a very high number for us. I think it's the highest since I've been around, the index.
Yeah, it's the highest since I've been here, probably the highest, probably since Act One was put in place. I mean, the, the only other thing that you would choose to do if you didn't do this was to apply for exceptions. And really, one of the only exceptions left anymore is the Piers' exception. And I don't know that any school district is going to be able to be eligible for the Piers' exception next year because the rate has actually gone down, which is very good news for us.
That was fantastic news. That was Christmas news. That was a Christmas gift.
Yeah, I don't know that that was expected by anybody, even that a year ago, they had projected it to go up, not even stay the same. So it going down was certainly an early Christmas gift to us all, so.
Okay, further questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're down to the closing. There are no discussion items tonight. Do we have any public comment on agenda items? Nothing heard. We had some enclosures this evening. We had an executive session at 6:30. Ron, would you tell us, brief us on the executive session?
Sure, Ms. President.